Public hearing?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Oh, yep. One public.
So I have three things to say, or three parts I would say. First part is I'm putting on my conservation commission hat. Um, so I'm not the school committee, I'm chair of the conservation commission. And I want to share with the school committee and everybody that conservation commission usually has that it looks around for things to support. There's a garden, there's Mrs. Wilk here. Um, this year with problems with the override, um, we looked around and we have a savings account. That's significantly larger than our regular budget. So we're going around to every committee, uh, organization within the town and saying, do you have a project? Do you have some materials? Do you have something you want to do that you have to be transported to to do? Um, have already gotten some interest from the friends at the library who want to bring Tom Cardy down? Uh, that's the kind of thing. Um, I talked to the police department, they're doing a, uh, a program for kids around what do you do if you're lost? Um, it might even apply to what if you do, what do you do if you're lost in the mall? But it's meant for what if you, what do you do if you're lost in the woods? Um, so that's the sort of thing we're going to find. So any parent, any teacher, school committee members, the administration, anybody has an idea. Write it up, figure a cost, get all of us with the conservation commission and we'll see. If it's, you know, not astronomical, I'm sure we'll fund it. We want to see things happen and we've had this savings account for more years than any of us on that committee know. Um, even David Fool doesn't remember when it started and it's, it's a savings account. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, um, I'm a retired science teacher. And as I go in the winter and I try and get my garage straight, so my wife's car is over there, which I'm sure some of you appreciate. Uh, and as I go down through the basement trying to make new things up, there's all kinds of science toys, little tops that hang off of things, Newton's cradle, a black light. Uh, I was very creative, uh, Einstein over there, but my wife said, no, you can't. I was in a night science plane, I don't want to get, want to get rid of that. So these things are here for free for the taking. Um, if you think of somebody else who would want, uh, near the school, take them. Uh, so that's number two. Number three, um, also in that collection of things that I have are, as Mark will remember, I have a shocking boom device for teaching us that electricity, which we used in his classroom here. Um, I also have, uh, equipment for studying pond life in the spring. There's always little crawling creepy things in the water. Um, I've also got a device here talking about the dangers and beauties of current type electricity. And then of course I have the rocket, water rockets that go about twice as high as anybody thinks they do. Um, that I've used here at the school in the summer and I used them one other time as well. So I have these things, if somebody would like me to come into a classroom and do something, I can't charge you because I sit over there. So it would be a free, they're meant for, you know, I do these things as a classroom thing, not something to do for a whole school assembly, but for something to do for two classes. You know, some of it's an hour, some of it would be two hours.
Thank you, Mark.
So thanks, Mark, I will, as you're walking back. Um, I want to, I say that we as a school appreciate your, um, offering to come in to the classrooms. Hopefully, um, we can figure out a way to make that happen. It sounds really interesting. And, um, secondly, uh, to your first point about the conservation commission, I sure hope that, um, the school will take you up on that as well. I would love to hear, um, from the principal, David Crane, um, ways in which that, you know, that money from the conservation commission could be used. Um, I think that there's a lot of, especially with all the forestry we have in the back, um, something, you know, really cool could be done with that. So thank you very much for coming from both those hats. And now you're putting back on your school committee hat and sitting back.
I haven't gotten one yet, I need one.
Yeah.
I have school committee tee type, T-shirts.
We'll work on the hats. Um, any other, uh, public hearing? Um, before we go any further, um, we did, I did, I, I moved over reorganization, we'll go back to that. But I also just want to point out that, um, uh, Jen Icorn has resigned from the school committee and I want to thank her for her, she told me six years on the committee. So that's a long time to be on the school committee. She has recently taken on a new position and, um, just felt like this was, uh, you know, very time, uh, consuming position and she couldn't, she couldn't manage both of them. So, um, we wish her luck in her new position. And I do know that she just sent a letter, um, looking to be the rep for Gil Montague. So we will, we will go through that process of, um, deciding to whether we're going to appoint her as a representative to Gil Montague. We have in our budget, um, two representatives. So that would actually be the first time in, I think, a very long time that we would have, um, two representatives to Gil Montague, which would really, really be nice. So, um, again, I want to thank Jen Icorn for her time and her effort. She, uh, was a chair for a long time. Um, she did negotiations, she was on a lot of different subcommittees. Um, and so she will be missed. And so that also leads us into, we have an opening on the board for a school committee member. So if anybody would like to put a letter of interest in, you can send that to me, you can send it to Pam Rogers at the central office, either one, um, we would love to have you. That being said, we'll move back to the reorganization of the committee. Again, because we lost Jen, she was on a couple of committees. Um, we need to have a, um, another person appointed to the sick bank, um, to the capital planning and to the superintendent's search committee, so.
And policy.
Oh, and policy, yes, sorry, skipped over that one. Um, so I am on the sick bank already. Uh, we do need to have two per the guidelines of the sick bank.
I'll do it.
Okay, uh, so we'll nominate Eric Sem to be the second person on the sick bank. Any other nominations? Eric, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay. All right, so Eric will be on the sick bank. We need a policy, capital planning and superintendent's search committee. Anybody have an interest?
I'm already on the capital planning, right? Yep, that's what we need.
Um.
Sorry, I'm a little slow.
No, don't worry, I know it's very hard to be part of the meeting and take notes, so I really appreciate you taking the notes. We are also in, uh, looking for a, a note taker if anybody is interested in that position as well. It is a paid position.
I nominate Caitlin for the capital planning.
Are you interested?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, I'll second that then. Uh, anybody else that would be interested? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, policy and superintendent's search.
And I'm already on policy.
Mark?
I was looking at the last two and thinking policy might be a better fit than the, uh, superintendent's search committee, although I could do either one.
Mark, I'm going to suggest you do both.
I've already got a committee that meets monthly, but.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We don't have to have somebody right away unless we get a new board member soon.
Well, yeah, I don't.
That's true, we can, we can table this till, till at least the next meeting.
Okay, I'll just, if Mark's interested, I'll nominate Mark for the.
Which one? It would be nice to have at least someone for policy.
Policy.
Just because.
When are, when are they meeting first for the superintendent's search committee? Do you remember?
I don't, I don't think they had another meeting scheduled because they were still working some things out. It's my recollection from last night, right? Am I wrong?
Um, yeah, they shared a rough, like, draft of us, of deadlines they wanted to meet and I think they want someone by February. So my guess is between December and January they'll have.
Yeah, I don't think they were meeting in December. I think it was.
Just January.
At least not till January, yep.
Well, put me on policy for now.
Policy, okay, so I'll make a motion to nominate Mark for a policy committee.
Second.
Any other, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Okay, you got to vote. All right, and so we will table superintendent's search committee until next meeting. We may have another member by then. All right, so, um, we need to approve the minutes from October seventeenth.
I'll make a motion to approve October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three's minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You're very comprehensive, thank you.
I will say it helps when I get everyone's notes of what they were going to share because it's a lot easier to kind of make sure nothing is missed.
Absolutely, you can always too go back and look at the video if you need.
Oh, yes, there was a lot of video.
Yes, I know, it's, it's really a very difficult thing to be part of the meeting and take the notes. It really is, so, um, I really commend your ability to do that. All right, so no other, no, um, changes needing to be made? Um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great, all right, on to warrants. We've got a bunch of warrants just to approve. Um, we'll make a motion to approve, uh, are we all set with just batch, batching them all together?
Is it possible to find out something about what they are as, you know, being ignorant of much of this? Is there any shiny definition of some?
Let's ask Caitlin. Can you just give a brief overview of what the warrants are? Mark's wondering, at least just the.
Yeah, just general statement, what's, what's one oh nine, what's ten, one oh ten?
Each warrant has a lot of invoices attached, so.
But it's like some are payroll, some are other things.
The ones under payroll are the payroll warrants and the ones that are just under vendor are the accounts' payroll warrants.
Do you want anything more for vendor?
No, that's good enough.
Is the breakdown what you sent us in the email?
That is just an overview of what the expenditures since the last time we met.
Okay.
Are.
Do you want to have it?
I move it for, we, for a massive batch.
Okay, would it be helpful to have it some different way for next meeting or do you feel?
I would like to have more information, but I don't, if it's too much, yeah, there's a lot going on and I'm not sure whether, you know, what's the easiest way to do that? But I would like to know something more about them as they come through, if there's a way to do that. If it's, it's not, it's not, but if it's possible, I'd like to be able to.
I will tell you that I talked to Jesslyn yesterday and every other Friday they will be ready for signatures. So you, you're more than welcome to come and look at them. You, you don't have to technically sign them, but you're more than welcome to look through them. Anybody is on the committee, look through the warrants.
Okay.
And then you'd be able to see.
That would be a way to do it, that would cover my concerns.
Okay, all right, so we will, we will vote these as a whole big batch. So payroll one oh nine, one ten, one ten point one, and then vendor one ten, uh, I mean, sorry, ten, 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 eleven, ten, twelve, ten, thirteen, ten, fourteen, eleven oh four, eleven oh five and eleven oh six. And did you make that motion?
I thought you did.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great, okay. Um, any gifts?
No gifts, but we do have free grants. We have the free grant for nineteen thousand two hundred and eight dollars. The rural aid for thirty-five thousand nine hundred and three dollars and forty-nine cents. And the HIC grant for a hundred thousand dollars.
Again, are we okay voting them all together?
Yep.
Okay.
Someone's.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, report a Gil Montague representative. You did not see our representative today.
Next meeting.
Okay, uh, and she's also our Franklin Tech representative.
Next meeting.
Yeah, she usually though sends.
I thought there was an email about those.
Um, just one sharing the newsletter.
The newsletter, right.
Okay.
From the superintendent. Um, there has been several articles in the newspaper about the tech school, I know, also Gil Montague for that matter, but, um, so I encourage people to read the recorder news articles about the schools. I think, uh, they've been covered a little bit more recently, so it's been nice. Report from the Irving Teachers Association. Elizabeth, can you bring that down even more? I'm worried that you're not going to.
Can everybody see me do this? Okay, okay, ready?
Mm-hmm.
So I have just some updates from various teachers and things going on in the building. So I'm going to start with preschool. Um, preschool is happy with their two classes and they're focusing on building a community, talking about things they're thankful for, how to be a good friend and fair ways to play. And they're working on a lot of different fall activities. In second grade, they're discussing what we all deserve in life. Both classes have created a we believe statement for all people. Students have discussed the difference between want and need, needs in preparation of supporting the food bank of Western Massachusetts and supporting those who suffer from food insecurity. Um, this is a little inspirational, um, quote that the humans believe they all deserve. No, here are what these inspirational little humans believe we all deserve. We believe all people should feel safe, be treated nicely, have clothes, get plenty of food and water, be loved, receive good health care, feel happy, cared for and included. Um, we believe all people have the right to healthy food, clean water, health care, clothing, education, safe places to live, share their voice and love anyone they want. It was really nice. Um, in fourth grade in my class, we're going to be joining Mrs. Batinsky's preschoolers soon, um, partnering as book buddies when we return from Thanksgiving break. Um, lots happening in P E. So just if you, to give you a little idea about what happens in grades three through six in P E class at the start of P E, um, they do a short little HIIT workout and, uh, Mrs. Galvin has started doing student-led workouts where she chooses five or so students to lead an exercise for the class. She's really impressed with the amount of exercises they now know after doing this with her for some time. They're allowed to choose the amount of reps, anywhere from ten to twenty, and she loves that most students are choosing fifteen to twenty and not taking the easy route. They've begun cooperative challenges in some classes. These entail Ms. Galvin giving very vague directions with the parameters of the activity and then letting the students problem solve and work together to complete the challenge. Her favorite part is the screaming and cheers when they persevere and complete it. Um, something fairly new to Irving is, um, health class. Something fairly new to Irving is health class, and also taught by Ms. Galvin. And she says, "In all classes, grades preschool through six, we started the year off with a lengthy social and emotional learning unit that encompassed what sympathy and empathy are, the difference, and how to show them. We've talked extensively about what being a good friend is and what that looks like, showing kindness to friends and others, and how to be an upstander and not a bystander when someone's being treated badly. In the older grades, we discussed bullying, including the types, and what you can do about it. In the older grades, we've recently moved on to the human body systems and what they do for us. Some younger grades have recently moved into a nutrition unit and are beginning to learn how to read nutrition labels and what they mean. Fitness Fridays is something that happens after school. Many may not know, as this is only offered to grades four through six, but in the middle of October, Ms. Galvin started a Fitness Fridays group. She checked for interest with students via a survey and sent permission slips home for those interested, and she ended up with a really nice group of students. Every Friday, 3:30 to 4:15, she leads a group between, a group of between 13 and 16 students through three HIIT circuits that include the use of dumbbells and many exercises. They've been amazing at following along and performing every exercise to the best of their abilities with their safety-minded instructor. They rise to the challenge of more difficult and muscle-taxing exercises, and they don't complain, other than to ask how many more sets they have. Fitness is a passion of Ms. Galvin's, and she began that journey of lifting weights at 11 years old. She's really happy to possibly be able to pass that passion on to these children and perhaps have it become a lifelong habit. And lastly, the math team reports. Tier-two interventions are happening throughout the building, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom in small groups. The services were based on the Forefront Screener data. The math team collaborates monthly with the three other schools in Union 28, Swift River, Leverett, and Chootsberry. The benefits are numerous. They compare curriculum, so the schools compare curriculum and assessments, teaching and learning in general. And representatives from all four schools in the union recently attended the Forefront Conference in Worcester. And their relationship, the relationship among the four schools allowed for maximizing the resources that were available at the conference so they could spread out and see, go to different workshops. And then when, because they meet monthly, they can share that information. So that's that. Do you have any questions?
Are you able to send that to me?
This?
Yeah, just so I can copy and paste.
I'll make a copy and send it to you, sure.
Awesome, thank you.
You can just attach it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So my hope is to do this next month as well. And then we'll get different teachers. It's a lot, so I don't want to do everybody once.
Make it a little shorter. No.
It was great. Thank you for sharing.
Next.
Excuse me, Collaborative for Education report?
We have not met again since the last time I reported from September's meeting, so I think the next meeting's in January, but I can...
Oh, wow. Long wait, okay. Regionalization update. Again, that was one that, excuse me, that Jen was working on. So we will pass that. Capital Planning Committee?
Oh, well, let me just say that the regionalization, you're talking about the...
Pioneer Valley.
Pioneer Valley. Yeah, I mean, they were in the newspaper with an elaborate description. And I think today's paper also had the information on Northfield meeting about it and what their discussions were. So people should read that.
Mm-hmm. Excellent. We should get a cut of the recorders. Capital Planning. Eric, you have anything to report?
Do you have anything to report?
We've not met since the last meeting.
Yeah, we haven't met, okay. I'll text you with the meeting date. You want to?
Yeah, now that we have a committee again.
Okay, all right, okay.
So with that, though, do you want to speak about the grant? Or are you going to speak about that in your report?
I was going to do my report, but I can do it now if you prefer.
No, no, that's fine, as long as it's coming up somewhere. Superintendent's report. I got an email about 20 minutes before this meeting saying that she would not be here. So I, there is...
No report.
There's no report at this time. Director of Finance and Operations report.
All right, so I'm going to start with my Esser grant update. So I just redid a presentation that, it's just in paper copy, but it has to do with the Esser I, II, and III grants. So Esser I, in April of 2020, the Secretary of Education notified the states that they were releasing approximately $13.2 billion to the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, Esser Fund. Under the CARES Act, the intention of the funding was to support districts' efforts to address significant disruptions and obstacles and ensure learning continued for all students. The state of Massachusetts was provided $214,894,317 allocated based on the proportion the state received under Title I, Part A, in the previous fiscal year. Irving received $28,024 of Esser I money. So what we did with the Esser I money, the expenditures were $9,848 for health and safety. Those included COVID supplies, including face masks, frame tents, programming modifications, the HVAC system, and $18,176 for academic supports meeting student needs, Ethernet surge protector, HDMI adapter, magnetic board, toner, iPads, books, and first-grade primer reading program. Then Esser II. On December 27th, 2020, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act 2021 was signed into law, and additional $54.3 billion was provided for the Esser II fund. Massachusetts received an additional $814,890... Eight hundred, sorry, $893,96, which Irving Elementary School received $98,962. These funds need to be expended by September 30th, 2023. The funding was allotted for the following: Supplies and materials, $18,812. Stipends for $10,000. Contracted services for $25,000. Health insurance for $7,000. MTRS for $3,150. And instructional staff for $35,000. The expenditures were for supplies and materials in FY22, $18,705 for COVID test kits, USB cables, field guides, paperback books. In FY23, $4,294 for phonics, screener, books, games, second-step program notebooks. And for FY24, $1,741.58 for developing number concepts math, slide latch, intra-reading instructional kit, health room supplies. And all of those are just kind of a snippet of what those supplies were purchased for FY23 through 24. For stipends in FY22, $19,832, COVID response and other mental health-related stipends. Contracted services for FY22, $9,224 for social justice and equity study group. For health insurance in FY22, $2,560 for health insurance paid to support Esser-funded positions. FY23, $233 for health insurance paid to support Esser-funded position. And then again in FY24 for $4,207. Sure.
My understanding is that the town pays the health insurance. So can you explain that?
Yes, so when we have a position that's funded by a grant, often with the grant, we can apply to have some support for the MTRS and for the health insurance to, the towns aren't taking on both of those entirely.
So this $4,207 you're saying was paid back to the town to support the health insurance?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Can you do me a favor and check in on that? Because that's not my understanding from the town treasurer. So there's a disconnect there.
Okay, yeah, I can check.
That none of the health insurance in 22, 23, or 24 was paid by the Esser grant. So we need to reconcile that.
For instructional staff expense for FY22, $25,025 for a .5 FTE adjustment counselor. And then in FY24 for $10,872 for adjustment counselor that's partially funded to use up the rest of the Esser II funding. The amendments we did were approved April 12th, 2023 to move $9,800 from contracted services to stipends, and the same day to move $5,944 from contracted services to supplies and materials. And then on September 13th of this year to move $10,872.51 from instructional staff to MTRS to support staff. For Esser III, in March of 2021, the Secretary of Education again notified the states that they were releasing approximately $122 billion to the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. The state of Massachusetts was provided $1,831,416,990. Irving Elementary received $207,643 to be used by September 30th of 2024. The funding was allotted in the following areas: Supplies and materials, $12,793. Stipends for $14,000. Support staff for $20,500. Contracted services for $17,550. Other costs for $5,000. Health insurance for $7,000. MTRS for $10,800. And instructional staff expense for $120,000. The expenditures for Esser III so far, because we do have until September 30th of next year. For supplies and materials, for FY22, $1,967 for MR filters, face masks, disinfecting wipes. FY23, $4,897 in other supplies. Stipends, $14,000. In FY23, it was $7,170 stipends for social-emotional support. And FY24, $500 for the lead nurse stipend. For support staff, that is a $20,500. So let me stop for a second. So the support staff was, that allocation of money was to support our staff to be able to handle the Esser III money, Esser II money over the couple of years. And so we did not spend a lot of that money because we found that we could sort of do it within the time that we had during the day. Emily Ribzick, our accounts payable, kind of took on that extra job, could have collected extra money to do it and just did it in her own hours within the workday and didn't ask for any of it. So we are looking to do an amendment to put that money into a different category. Well, we have great meetings every other, every month with the principals, and that's one of the conversations we have. So for FY22, she took $130 for extra hours. In FY23, $80. But she's been handling all of the Esser II and Esser III grants.
So has this not come up in the meeting? Is that what you're saying? Or you haven't just landed on where it's going to go?
It has come up as, let's see how the year goes and where we'll need this money and where we should amend it to. What does that total look like? Oh, sorry, if it's coming up, you can... You go to the last page. Okay. Keep going. So for support staff, we have left is $20,290. For contracted services, we still have $17,550, other costs. The FY22 used all of that portion for damper, actuator fixed and replaced parts, gym faucet leak fixed, boiler number-two unit work, and some other building fixes. We still have the health insurance money, and that is done kind of yearly, so we'll probably have it into the spring when we'll use it. MTRS FY23, $8,640, paid to support the Esser-funded positions, and instructional staff expense of $120,000. We paid $53,157 for the adjustment counselor out of FY23. The remaining for FY, came out of the FY24 for, to be used up out of Esser II. So what we have for remaining funds to be used by September 30th, 2024 is $5,929 in supplies and materials, $6,330 for stipends, $20,290 in support staff, which will be amended and reallocated to another portion, $17,550 for contracted services. Our other cost is at zero. Health insurance is $7,000. MTRS of $2,160. And instructional staff expense, $66,843, which is a position that we, through this year, have posted as an adjustment counselor, a psychologist, a BCBA. And we believe we're going to be able to fill that position very soon.
So you have $66,843 still unused, right?
Yes.
But, and you said $53,157 of it was used in fiscal '23 for an adjustment counselor.
Yes.
But those two numbers do not equal $120,000, which is what you said was an instructional staff expense.
So the $53,157 and the $66,843?
Let me just double-check my math. Yeah, I come up to $100,000.
$53,000 and $63,000 is not under $1,000.
Nope.
$63,000 and $53,000.
Yep, yep.
$50,000 and $50,000 is on.
Yep, yep, yep. You're right. Okay. Yep, my math was wrong. Thank you.
I just had a quick question. Let me just scroll up, sorry. With the Esser II, it's listed, the stipends as $10,000 and contracted services as $25,000. And then when we have the breakdown, it is saying the stipends were almost $20,000, and the contracted services were a little under $10,000. Are those numbers amounts, were they just flip-flopped? Or did we just choose to allocate them a little differently than we originally thought?
So those were some of the amendments on...
Okay.
One of the other, the page before, Esser II approved amendments. Where we moved money from contracted services to stipends.
Perfect, thank you. And then this is just a question, because there's a lot of acronyms. What is MTRS?
Oh, Massachusetts Teachers Retirement System.
Okay. Thank you.
And so you'll double-check in with the treasurer on the health insurance, $7,000.
And then the other Esser years?
Mm-hmm. Okay, the end of your report?
Hang on, one second.
I'm sorry.
So, and so do you feel that the remaining money that we have, so in all those supply lines, all those lines that you listed, that, that, you talked about the instructional staff saying that you feel that you'll be able to fill it. Are you feeling like there is going to be those costs in the other line items?
Yes, I think every year we have supply material costs that would land under the Esser money that we can use those for. And we will make sure that we use all of the Esser III money before the September 30th deadline to use it all.
And so can you, when you have that meeting that you decide where that $20,290 is going, would you please report on it back to us?
So the end of your reports, if there are no further questions on the end of your report, I will ask for the school committee to vote to allow the chair to sign the certification statement.
That was the one that was emailed, do you have a hard copy to sign?
In my office, but I can do it after the meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to have the chair sign.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
So the Improving Ventilation Air Quality Grant update. Principal Crane, Eric Harris, Brian Smith, and I met on October 27th working first steps towards a feasibility study and procurement of the HVAC project. We have a tentatively scheduled meeting with Matthew McTeague from Eversource so we can begin moving towards a feasibility study. The Irving Secondary Tuition Update, we received the quarter one invoice from the Gilmonagu Regional School District. The amount for quarter one was $265,226.51. The Irving Secondary budget has been level funded the past two years, and this year it will be monitored very closely as we get towards the, the end of the year.
Meaning was that you were talking about with the, for the ventilation and air quality?
October 27th.
That's when you had it, when's the next one?
So for, we're looking at either Monday or Tuesday next week.
And that's with who?
That is with me, Brian Smith, Mariah, and I can't remember her last name, sorry.
Yeah, I know who she is, yeah, yeah.
And Eric Harris, and Matthew McTeague, who works for Eversource and is going to be able to kind of help us look at feasibility study with that one.
There, that person's going to be there on either Monday or Tuesday, you haven't narrowed it down yet?
Tentatively, yes. So the school warrants, we've been having a difficult time getting two signatures of the school warrants and the time the town needs to process them. I would like to ask the committee to consider going back to one signature or using DocuSign to make the process a little less cumbersome.
Okay, we'll consider that.
And now we can look at the budget. So I can start with the backside of the cover page, which is the summary. And it is early, but here are our numbers so far. We have for administration, an increase of 3.34 percent. Instruction of 5.03. Other school services, a decrease of 22.12, and that's going to be the one we'll come back to because it includes special education transportation. Plant operation maintenance, an increase of 3.62, fixed charges, increase of seven. ACQ improvement fixed assets of negative 44.59, and programs of their schools, a 4.69 percent increase. So, right now, the budget in kind of a very early season snapshot of what we're looking for would be an amount remaining for town appropriations of a 1.9 percent increase. If we turn to the next page.
Seven.
Well, 1.7 is a total source of funding, because we'd like to decrease their reliance on some of the grants to be able to use the grants to supplement, not, to support, not supplement, what, what the school is doing. So we want to use the grants to pay for salaries, but the supply lines of the grants really should stay outside of the local budget. So for administrative costs, most of those are Union 28 expenses. There is an increase of 3.3 percent. One of them is for line one, the school committee contracted services. There will, there is an increase in Medicaid contracted services fees. So when, so our providers of the school, whether it's a speech language provider or OT, PT, they have to do their reporting, and then I take it all and do the financial reporting, and then we batch it all together and we give it to Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, and then they put it together, and then they distribute to the state, that then gives money back to the town. But we're still liable for the expenses of hiring them to finish out the process, and those expenses are going up.
PT, since we lost?
Oh, we already hired one.
You did, you hired a new person?
Jenny Coons, she's our new PT, Gilmonagu. Fantastic. For some of the Union 28 lines, line 16, office supplies, we've just seen an increase in cost for supplies. For line 22, that's my line for travel because we're going back to in-person meetings for all of the school committee meetings. For going into instruction for line 38 therapeutic service, that is a big one because, because our S R three grant is running out, we would still like to fund our adjustment counselor or school psychologist, and that will need to move into our local budget. We're in a contract year for Unit B salaries, so all of the Unit B lines, salary lines are estimates, and those could change throughout the year.
Go back to 38 for one minute.
Sure.
So you want to, the only difference here is that you're including an adjustment counselor?
That and step and salary increases for the other personnel.
How many other personnel do we have?
I would have to check and get back to you.
What is budgeted for, what is budgeted for the adjustment counselor?
I would have to get back to you on the exact amount that, because we haven't hired someone yet, we're close. And so I, I don't know yet what that exact amount is going to be for the increase for.
Okay, because this line is increasing, if I'm reading this correctly, $111,919, that seems like an awful lot for therapeutic services. So I'd like a better breakdown of what that increase is for.
Absolutely.
Didn't you say there was a grant that's not, no longer funded it?
The S R three.
But that's just one position. How did we get to $111,919?
Well, because every other position under that category has a step and COLA increase.
Sure, but I think if they're under our contract, it was in the twos, right? Or three at the most, so that's why I'm wondering how many people you're, again, that raises it to $111,919.
I can get you the breakdown. There was a decrease for the library teacher, this is just change in personnel. An increase in line 52 for the copier lease, increase in copier contract. On the next page, there was an increase of the Union 28 lines. We actually increased the Union 28 Curriculum Instruction Coordinator to 1.0, which was past our Union 28 budget. This is going, this has decreased the budget for Irving Secondary because it was a .95 then paid through a bit of a stipend through Irving Secondary. We're removing that stipend, so they're just going to be paid entirely out of the Union 28 budget. Then for the Early Childhood Coordinator and Program Assistant, those look like high percent differences because all of their step and COLA is in the, is outside of the grant. The grant stays the same, any step, any COLA happens, and they're a small amount through the Union 28 budget. So it appears larger than the rest of them. Line 73, Special Education Transportation, we've reduced that line down to $85,000, but we don't know what that's going to look like with the van that was purchased with what the, if we are going to need one driver, two drivers, one driver, and a substitute, a monitor. So we put that line at $85,000, but we do need to monitor that line closely throughout the year. Same thing with the utilities in the plant's operations maintenance lines. So especially the fuel lines, school telephone, water, school power, those will have to be monitored as we get, you know, deeper into the winter, into the spring.
Salary, is that because you're feeling like we're just, we're not budgeting enough?
Yes. So we've had in past years, the budget's been $1,400, $1,400, $2,000. And in the last couple of years, we've had $14,916, $6,378. That line is just not adequate for being able to hire substitutes for any time one of our custodians is out. And then line 102, Special Education Tuition Other Schools, that is just an increase determined by the Operational Services Department, Division. We do need to decrease our reliance on some of the grants, some of the American Rescue Plan grants. And also make sure that those grants are just covering the, the cost of some of the salaries. And we're not then removing supply lines in our general budget to be able to, to use as grants. The Irving Secondary budget, we do have a much larger increase of 9.4 percent because we are seeing ourselves getting really close, because we, we've level funded for the past two years. We're getting very close to that line of when we're going to have to start asking the town for, for money if we go over on that budget. When I broke down the, the enrollment for next year, how many students will be enrolled at Gilmonagu? And what the tuition rate was this year, and then adding a small increase, I felt that we needed to increase the lines for regular tuition public schools and special education tuition public schools for those lines. Any other questions about the budget? And we can have more of a discussion, actually, I say that I will not be available to come to the next school committee meeting in December. I'm going to be out of the state. But I will make sure that any discussion that happens around the budget is noted and we can move forward in January with, with any budgetary changes, or if you reach out to me with any scenarios or questions, and I'm, I'm always an email away.
I have two questions that are not directly related to the budget.
Sure.
Uh, but you're the only one here that might be able to answer it, so just answer.
I'll do my best.
And if you don't have an answer, just, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, I know you've mentioned a couple times that you're in, they're in the process of possibly hiring either adjustment counselor, B C B A, or a psychologist. Do you know what role there, this person may?
Adjustment counselor.
Okay, so it would be more of adjustment counselor, okay. And then I know we have been getting messages on Class Dojo about this new opportunity where they're having two counselors from another organization come in to offer services, and they keep saying insurances are accepted, so I'm assuming that that partnership is a free partnership and that if tho, those counselors are getting paid, it's through insurances, through the parents that are signing their children up? Or do we also have a fiscal responsibility to those counselors, do you know?
The ones that are actively at the school?
The ones that, and like I said, you might not know, so it's okay. We just keep getting messages that the school has connected with two outside counselors. So parents are able to sign their children up to receive services during school hours. And it says that they So I'm, I guess my assumption would be that they're getting paid through the insurance and everything's being billed that way, but I was just wondering if you know if there is any kind of financial responsibility on the school to have this partnership?
I do know that since we have not been able to fill that position so far this year, we have contracted out some services. And so I don't know right now what, what the relationship is with, have, with insurance or whether it's school funded, I would have to look further into that.
Okay.
But we have had providers on site because we've had a lack of the position so far this year.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if this relationship was built on like, hey, we need some support, it looks like your services might be useful to us, and they get paid whether they have clients or not, or if it's strictly like, here's a really great opportunity that we can add to our repertoire of, you know, things that we're offering. And it can happen in school, so there's no, you know, transportation barriers, there's no scheduling barriers. But they're strictly paid off of, through insurance, so we don't have any financial responsibility, but we have this wonderful partnership and opportunity for families. So I just wasn't sure how that worked, because sometimes there's that like underlying, they're still going to get paid no matter what, and/or nope, it's strictly client based on how they get paid, and this is just a, a great relationship. So I was just curious.
So if that's it for the budget, I did send you the expenditure range to date. I could read through them, but I have been talking a lot, so I can also, if you have any questions on the expenditures over the last month or so, I can take those now.
Since you won't be, just going back to the budget.
For a minute, since you won't be here at the next meeting, could you please email out the question I had about line 38? So that we have that information before the budget, before our next school committee meeting?
Yes, I can do that.
The number 80, water, is that the town water, the water?
Yes.
The town actually charges with water. Thanks, Water Commission. Water is money in a circle, I guess.
But it is going down. I mean the kitchen line. Always. And that's it for my report.
Thank you.
Okay. Principal's report, Principal's not here.
No report.
No, there's a report in your packet. He does mention that there have been no applicants at the point of his November 13th letter, that there have been no applicants for the B C B A School Psychologist Adjustment Counselor position.
That has changed, we do have some progress.
Great. And it looks like they've welcomed some new, new student in first grade. And some new classroom paraprofessionals in preschool, first grade, and second grade. And then we also have our new part-time office assistant hired, which is Karen Savinsky. And so she's, I've met her and worked with her a couple times, she's been great, so wonderful. Excited to have all these new hires here.
Good. I will be mentioning that we still need heat on for our meetings, because I am freezing the dap up here. All right, seriously, I am freezing. My hands, I'm going to need gloves. Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Not here. Did you get anything from her by chance?
No, I didn't really, she doesn't usually go to the school.
She doesn't, but the, I had asked Jen about the MCAS data, Jen had deferred it to Lindsay and said that she was going to come and report on it.
Oh, I know she gave the full report last night at the Joint Supervisory Committee meeting.
Right, I had asked for Irving's specific information, and Jen had said that Lindsay was going to be the curriculum coordinator. was going to be the curriculum coordinator, I got her, her first name is Lindsay, for clarification.
Is it some of this material?
It is some of that, but we, I asked for Irving specific, this is all schools, yeah. Um, so I had asked for that information, and Jen had said that the director was going to be sharing that, that's why it's on the agenda.
I just copied out anything that had to do with Irving.
Yeah.
And.
Um, so, we will have to follow up on that, since she is not here. All right, Budget and Personnel Committee report.
What did I put up?
We're on vacation now, now that it's, it's been passed, we're, we're taking a break.
Okay. Uh, Union Twenty-Eight Committee report, um, do you wanna report on anything about the Union Twenty-Eight?
Well, I was only there for part of the meeting.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted, I mean, I can say hello.
The only part that I really played any significant part to was trying to field questions regarding the, um, committee to examine pros and cons of withdrawing, and that committee is, just get, I can report on that at the time, we get to it.
Yep, I was just about to say, it is on there, so, yeah. Uh, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction did go through some MCAS scores related to all four schools and state results, which was helpful, big picture, but as I just mentioned, I was looking for Irving specific information about MCAS, uh, the superintendent had reported last meeting, again, on statewide scores, which i- is helpful to some degree, but, you know, as Irving School Committee members, we would like to know specifically about Irving, um, and so I will follow up with that and try and get that report for next meeting, 'cause I, I think it is important, especially as we talk about budget, um, we talk about new curriculum, um, MCAS is something that we, we look at, so, it is important to us.
I was gonna say that it seemed to me that we did not do as well as the other schools.
We did not.
Overall. Um, I mean, in detail, a little bit here, a little bit there, it's a very complex set of charts, but in, in general assumptions, we didn't do as good as the other three schools.
I believe, that was my takeaway as well, again, which is why I would like a little bit more information about that, so that we could have the full picture. Next meeting is January twenty-second at six thirty PM.
They also shared about the superintendent search update, um, so they, I, they hired out to get the job posting created by the Massachusetts School Committee Association, um, and so they created the job description and is posting the job description, or the, the job, and it should be live on school spring as of now, so the superintendent job should be active and posted, um, there is a whole process that they're going through, but I think their end goal date is to have someone hired around the middle of February to start in July, so, um, just expect some updates and information as we go through that process, and I'm sure that they will include, um, many people from all of the schools, um, and really want input around that, so, that is in process.
Okay. Anything else? It was a lengthy, uh, meeting, but a lot of it was discussions in, within those, um...
Oh, and the, um, Director of Student Services.
Gave a report, yeah.
Also shared a report on, um, what they are going through and what they have, um, as far as people coming in, and she called it an audit, but it's not really an audit, but that's what stuck in my head, of Desi coming in and reviewing how we're doing things and what things look like, to make sure that, um, we're doing everything that we need to do in the special world.
In regards to special education?
Yep.
Yep. All right, um, old business, oh, some of this is a little bit of like, old business, so, we'll move right into new business, negotiations, um, we're gonna be creating a subcommittee to negotiate for Unit B, their negotiations are coming up, um, this, this late winter and on, so we'll need a, a negotiating team for that. So, um, what was that?
I'm not here.
Oh, okay, now, um...
No, I'm here, 'cause if I wasn't here, you'd put me on it.
That's right, you're right. Um, we can, um, we can do one of two things, we can do this tonight, or we can do this at our next meeting, um, in hopes that we have another member, which would you like to do?
Wait till next meet.
That works for me.
All right, um, the seven D driver job description, so before we do the job description, we are going to vote, um, to actually include this position, um, as, as a new position in our, in our district, so, um, that's kind of the base, we have to decide we're gonna formally do this, and that's basically what we're voting, and then there's other layers to it that we will be voting, but, um, do I have a?
Some moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yep.
Okay, so this is vote, the position of, uh, the van driver for the special education van.
Part-time, right?
Um, that, all of that is to be determined, we're, we're just, the position.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna, so, any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Um, so, then, we have been given a draft job description, we will vote the job description as written, and then we will come back and vote a final version.
Tonight, or?
Nope, after, after we've negotiated with Unit B and, and everything is all set and done. So we're voting this draft version tonight. Does that make sense, is everybody clear on?
Wait, you're, sorry.
Yep.
You're voting for the van dra- the driver's contract?
Nope.
No.
We're vi- we're, we're voting on the draft driver's job description.
Got it.
Yep, nope, that's okay, good question, and then, once everything is set and done with negotiations and all of that, then we'll come back and vote final version.
Got it, thank you.
So, this is gonna be a, a lengthy process?
No, I'm hoping not.
Well, that's my point, I mean...
We have a meeting scheduled to meet with Unit B already, so...
Okay, all right.
We're moving forward. These are kind of just procedural things we gotta get through.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, okay.
All right, so I need a motion in a second.
May I make a motion? Second.
Okay, on, uh, any other discussion?
Um, this came up when I first saw this, and it says, ability to perform emergency first aid, and there's no measure of that, which, in my mind, should be something such as a standard first aid certificate, or its equivalent.
Okay, so you wanna make that amendment to it?
I would like to amend the, um...
So CPR and first aid certified, is that what you're?
First, yes, or equivalent.
Okay, I mean, I was putting words in your mouth, but is that?
Yep.
The gist of it, okay?
Yes.
All right, that, any other amendments we wanna make? No, all right, so we'll vote the, uh, draft job description as amended?
Some moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now, again, procedurally, we have to vote to put this dri- this position in the Unit B contract pending negotiations with Unit B. Again, it's a kind of procedural, and this is all new to us, 'cause I believe this is the first new position we've had in Irving in, like, ever?
I'll make a motion.
I just need a second.
Put this person in, and put this person in, in Unit B.
Okay, great, um, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, and as I mentioned, we do have a meeting with Unit B scheduled to negotiate this in, um, we also, just, just to quickly tell everybody at home, the van has arrived, it, uh, is at the town hall, um, the town administrator has, has had a chance to look at it, he says it's very nice, we're very excited, um, this van driver, whoever gets hired, will be driving around in a brand-new two thousand twenty-three Chrysler Pacifica, so, uh, that's really nice, I don't have a brand-new car, so, uh, I'm kind of jealous. Um, it does have our...
Apply for the job.
I know, really, um, it does have our, uh, our, the school name on it, um, it is all seven D compliant, which is what, uh, school vehicles need to be, um, so, we're really excited, we're ready to get going, this is one more piece, uh, that we'll have to do, we'll then, once we negotiate this into the contract, we will then put an ad out, um, for, for a van driver, so if you are seven D licensed and you're looking for a job, um, I encourage you to keep your eye out for this ad, it will go up on school spring, um, and, and other sites that, uh, that we use. So, that's very exciting, we've done this in less, uh, just about a year, so that's a really great turnaround, to get this, voted to do this, and the van is in the parking lot in just, just under a year, and again, that should also realize us pretty significant savings as far as our transportation out-of-district costs, so, again, very excited about that. So, uh, Pi Report.
I have that.
Excellent.
Um, so, we just want to thank everyone who attended and supported, um, the Bingo for Books night, that was, um, well-attended and everyone had a great time, we just, uh, sent home the calendar raffles today, each child was sent home with five calendars to sell, they are five dollars each, the goal is to have, um, each child sell five, however, we understand that there might be some families that aren't interested or don't want to, which is absolutely fine, so we're just asking that they return them back to the school so that they can be sold, um, by another family, if people need more calendars, um, everyone started with five, but if they want more, we do have more to sell, um, and if there's any community members that want to buy calendar raffle, uh, let the school know, and we'd be happy to get you some of those, um, we, they are for the month of January, so we're gonna start selling them, um, from now until the last week, right before break, we're gonna ask that the stubs and money be returned, um, to have that starting point to be able to start pulling in January, but, um, we've also know that some people like buying them even throughout January, knowing that they won't have a full month to get all of those chances, but we're still gonna keep selling them as we have them available through, um, January as well, so, that is a, an exciting fundraiser that we're bringing back and starting again, um, also, the Irving Apparel Store is now open, so a link, a link for both of those was shared on Class Dojo, um, but the link to the apparel store was, um, shared on Class Dojo, and we're asking that all orders be placed by December sixth, so that way the apparel can arrive on time for the holidays, um, and then I also wanted to share that we're really trying to update, uh, the Facebook page and keep that up-to-date with links and information of what's going on, um, so if you are, have not found us on Facebook yet, it still says Irving PTO, so if you're searching, that's what you would search for, um, even though we are Pi, Facebook is funny and won't let us change the name, uh, but we will start, you know, making sure everything is available on there as well, and try to keep that updated, and that is also where we plan on sharing the raffle winners, they'll be contacted directly as well if you're a winner, but that will be, um, where we're kind of sharing everyone who's won, um, and then the next meeting will be Monday, December fourth, virtually at seven PM, the link will be shared on Class Dojo, and it will be shared on the Facebook page, so we look forward to having new, um, caregivers join us for that.
And I also think, uh, that the apparel store link was shared on Facebook.
'Cause I'm not part of Class Dojo.
Yes, yep, I, I shared it on our Facebook page, and I think people shared it after that, so, yeah, anyone that wants Irving apparel.
I'm just thinking grandparents or people that may not get the Class Dojo, you can get it on Facebook.
Yep, and they switched it to like, winter apparel, um, so there's like, sweatshirts, and there's a nice fleece, and there's some winter hats and stuff like that, so there's a lot of nice things on there.
Excellent. All right, and then, the Irving Subcommittee to examine the pros and cons of staying or leaving Union Twenty-Eight, I love that title.
Gotta find an, an acronym that comes out of all of that, we haven't done that yet, let's, maybe, we should put that on the agenda for the next time. Um, we met, we assembled a list of, of information that needs to be sought, um, we looked for that inf- we, you know, we divvied that up, and people have started, um, putting that together, um, and, you know, topics include, you know, has this come up in the past, what really is involved, um, the cost question, which was submitted at that, originally, in that letter that came out in May, um, you know, those cost estimates haven't been verified yet, um, but anyway, um, one of our members, um, realized that it was too much work, um, actually, I think she recognized it also immediately, immediately, uh, we put out a request for somebody else to come in, and, uh, Tom Smith has said he'd like to come in.
Yes, and we will be voting, as soon as you're done with your report, we'll, we'll vote him as an official member.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have much more to say, I, I did, at the meeting last night, uh, suggest that there's a lot of things coming down the pike that, um, are room for, you know, instability, um, the efficiency report that came down with conclusions of other in hiring more people, which, it would cause the questions to be, you know, an analysis of what would and wouldn't work, uh, consolidating the elementary schools as opposed to being a union, um, which has its own question, and, um, changes in, um, districts, um, have a pretty mixed record right now, of people saying, yes, we want to, and no, we don't, and, uh, in fact, the, the things I mentioned, uh, about Northfield, their meeting, a significant number of people had said they didn't want to join the Gil Montague, um, and so there's all kinds of other instabilities out there that may pull on us, such as, you know, if those two schools do go, go together, will they demand that we do something different with our students? Anyhow, there, there's a lot of other things that may affect besides whatever we may think. I also, um, looking at the questions that needed to be researched, it seemed to me, it is really hard to get it done with, um, a principal search underway, a superintendent's search underway, and regardless of how we might wanna move forward on it, it might be, be very well that we need to, you know, get a report finished and then just, um, let it sit and not have a community meeting that discusses it, I mean, let people discuss it, but I'm saying it's not have a vote on it, um, until we're in another place, um, I mean, I don't even know where the principal search question is now, um, and where that's going to lead us, um, so, I don't know whether I can answer any questions or not, because, you know, people haven't done all, or I haven't seen all of the research that people are doing.
You're still really early in the process.
Yeah, it's pretty early, and, and even, if everybody had finished all the research by now, or, or by the December meeting, there's still probably twice as much research to go into it.
Yeah, okay.
Since we listed out all of the people that were like, nominated in the last meeting, just for the record, can you share who Tom is replacing, so it makes sense if someone's trying to see who's on the committee, or maybe a new list of committee members, once we have it?
I just wanna have them all, you know what I mean?
I have a hard time with names, and they just drop off the side of...
Yeah, so, not right now. So, at some point, just reporting a new list of members so that we can have that on record?
I might be able to pull it out.
That's okay.
With paper in my pocket at some point, or something like that, um, it'll come to me before the meeting's over.
Perfect, so, deal, is Tom replacing, or is Tom just becoming the seventh person?
He, he's replacing a person who, basically, as soon as they said they were interested, never did anymore, and when pressed, said, no, I don't think I should.
Okay, so they weren't, they weren't...
We had seven names last time.
Okay, so, Tom Smith has come forward to, uh, express his interest in this committee, so we need to officially vote him in, um... so we need to officially vote him in, appoint him, I should say, so that he can then become part of the, get sworn in at the Town Hall to become part of the committee. So first step is us appointing him to the committee. So I just need a motion to appoint Tom Smith, the seventh member of the subcommittee. Second?
Yep.
All right. So, all in favor of appointing Tom Smith to the subcommittee?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right, so we'll let Tom know, and then he can take the next step.
I got the name. It came to me. It popped up on top of the gray matter. It's Catherine. She said she couldn't do it.
Okay. So we have.
And then, do you know when your next meeting is, just out of curiosity?
It's the first Wednesday, Wednesday in December.
First Wednesday, okay.
Seven PM?
Six.
Where?
The library. And nobody's allowed to eat dinner beforehand, so that we get out of there by seven. It works in the Conservation Commission, so I think it'll work in this committee.
I'm just gonna check the date. I don't know what it is.
The first one is in December?
Six.
Yeah.
December sixth.
First Wednesday.
All right.
Before we, I don't know if this fits in new business, or if I'm allowed to bring this up, but.
Yep.
Do we have an update on principal search and what that looks like and what that process is gonna be, timeline?
We do not.
Okay.
I believe that usually happens in the spring.
Hmm?
I think it usually gets posted in the spring.
Well.
Oh, sorry, superintendent, principal.
Principal.
Yes, it is in the spring.
Well, we'll be doing some work ahead of that. So the committee, there's, there's no update as far as.
Okay.
To give you.
Because I know we wanted to look at that job description again to make sure it makes sense, and just make sure that we're doing our due diligence and being really intentional about how we're going through that process.
Yes, agreed.
So maybe starting that conversation and what that would look like and just rough timelines and stuff would be great.
Yeah, yep. We'll have it added to the agenda. Okay, so policy review and update. We have a first read on an early childhood policy, development and dissemination of procedures policy. We have a second read, so first read, just, you know, that's all we need to do, just read it over. Second read, first vote on school council and school improvement plan. So in your packet, BDFA. Wish we'd used numbers or something. And again, this is just the first vote on it. It'll come back next meeting. And then the next one. BDFA-dash-E, School Improvement Plan. So this is your first, I mean, sorry, your second read, first vote on these two. Do you want to take them together or individually?
Together. So I'll make a motion to vote on BD, BDFA and also BDFA-dash-E.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All of those will come back for next meeting. Well, yeah, all of them will come back. Some of them will come back for different votes. Next school committee meeting Tuesday, December nineteenth, seven PM here. And the Policy Committee. What do you think?
Is hopefully.
December nineteenth at six thirty. So right before this meeting. Is there anything else?
Yes. I wanted to bring up, not as something we need to take any action on right now, but as a topic we need to be looking into in preparation if. And that is the question of unfunded benefit packages for new hires. The, the issue was, oh, it's, it's been brought up by members of the Select Board to some school committee meetings. It's been brought up at town meetings, and it also came up on the, as part of the override votes, where it was voted down, and as well as was the entire question. Now, I understand the town is trying to solve the problem for this year and for the people that, that are affected by that. However, if they can't, or if they decide to bump it back to us, I would like it if, in the intervening month, we looked at where we can find some money here, some money there, wherever. Just, you know, like I'm saying, star some things or highlight some places where if they say, you know, here, we, we can only do this number of positions, we can't do any more than that, or we don't have money, whatever. If it comes to us, then we would have some solutions to draw on. I don't like the idea of things that are being batted around and that, you know, we do know of, not getting looked at ahead and not being considered for solutions. So I would just like it if, you know, the superintendent's office, us, and I don't know whoever else we can turn to, but, you know, look at what we've got for a budget and for expenditures and, and just, you know, see, well, if there's a problem, this is where we would turn.
Great. I think that's a great idea. Let's add that to new business for, for our December meeting. I know that the treasurer was working on that today, so hopefully we'll get some guidance soon from that department on what they're thinking, but I agree, that's a, it's a good idea to just be looking at it and be prepared. Exactly. Yep. Thank you for bringing that up.
I hope we don't have to deal with it.
Yep. So we will add that under new business. And that's our current budget we would need to look at and possible future budgets, but at least short-term would be our current budget. Is there anything else? Okay. Do, we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, eight thirty-four.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Thanksgiving. I keep forgetting I got Thursday off.
A forced day off?
A Thursday off.
A forced day.
Forced, yeah.
Forced. You're gonna get cooking.
But people are calling, are you open, are you open Thursday?